And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is the time we set for public comments. Let's people keep their comments, three minutes or less. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on. Have everybody had a chance to review the minutes?
Is Bill on?
Jack, I do have a public comment in the office.
Okay. So are they on your comments? Get on for a public comment.
Hi. I'm one of the people with a public comment. I believe there will be some others.
Okay.
Would you like me to wait till you start everyone, or how would you like to approach that?
Spencer, go ahead and start your comments.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. My name is Spencer Taylor. My wife and I and our six children live on Brookdale Drive in Atchison. Today I address you concerning the full campus quarantine order that was almost issued involving Benedictine College. Furthermore, I'd like to address the county's approach to the COVID-19 matter generally and where the county goes from here. On Friday afternoon, the county commission worked out details with Benedictine, so there has been a pause involving Atchison County and Benedictine College. And it's worth reviewing how we got here. So how did we? On July 7th, in response to Governor Kelly's statewide mask order, the Atchison County Commission met. Commissioner Knoll made a motion in that meeting to revoke the governor's order. But there was no second, so the motion failed for lack of a second. Therefore, Atchison County has been under Governor Kelly's mask order for the last two months. What does the governor's order do? There are many things it does, but one I want to focus upon. The governor's orders by not allowing citizens to self-govern, in effect, tells us that the governor can solve our problems with statewide orders, and further that we cannot solve our own problems without those orders. I would submit, dear commissioners, that we can solve our own problems, and we're already doing it in Atchison County. We're not doing it with orders, so how are we solving our problems? Today, we have the benefit of a lack of government order because the county paused. So instead, we're following what you could call the Kansas way, which is really the American way. We're solving our own problems. Benedictine College followed the Kansas way. So did its students. Its students came here trusting in the goodwill and good sense of Kansas. Benedictine College, to be confident about their operations, took incredible efforts to be good neighbors. I ask, what business in Atchison County tested not just every employee, but every customer? Only Benedictine College went to that cost, risk, and extent to help their neighbors. The PCR test for COVID-19 has been producing some distorted results recently that has been picked up by both the CDC and researchers. In fact, the New York Times just published on August 29th, 2020, their own analytical study of COVID-19 PCR tests, and I quote, "In three sets of testing data that include cycle thresholds compiled by officials in Massachusetts, New York, and Nevada, up to 90% of people testing positive carried barely any virus." The United States recorded on Thursday before they published their article, quote, "45,000 new coronavirus cases," according to a database maintained by the Times. If the rates of contagiousness in Massachusetts and New York were to apply nationwide, then perhaps only 4,500 or 10% of those people may actually need to isolate and submit to contact tracing. Furthermore, in Massachusetts, from 85 to 90% of the people who tested positive in July with a cycle threshold of 40, would have been negative if the threshold were 30 cycles.
Spencer, I don't want to cut you off, but you've already used your three minutes. So you've got 30 seconds to wind things down.
I had tried to find out what your parameters were. I'd appreciate it. I'm speaking also on behalf of some other people if you'd allow me to complete my comments.
Okay, as long as it is another three minutes.
Dr. Minna, an epidemiologist at Harvard School of Public Health, said that none of those people should be contract traced, not one. So he's talking about 90% of the people. This tells us many important things about the Benedictine and Atchison situation. First, it tells us not to overreact to test results. The viral loads present may be quite low and asymptomatic, and even the rapidly diminishing numbers show that this is likely the case and corroborates what both Harvard and the New York Times documented. The difference in magnitude is massive. Currently, there are fewer than 40 students in quarantine because of the positive test results. According to Dr. Minna from Harvard, only four of those people should have been isolated. Four people. We're talking about a very small group. In contrast, the proposed order would have quarantined 2,000-plus adults. So the county, by taking the pause, averted a terrible mistake. And this demonstrates we can be confident in Kansas to solve their own problems. I want to speak to my own experience. I'm at double risk for COVID-19 because of lung and heart issues. As a 17-year-old, I had 10% lung function. I also have atrial fibrillation. So the way I've dealt with COVID-19 is just to get fresh air, sunlight, oral hygiene, ordinary hygiene, vitamin D supplements, and to be active. In short, I've been living and using good judgment. And all of these things are known to help with COVID-19. Furthermore, the masks are not good for health. I know that because I'm not supposed to wear one. Both the Center for Disease Control and the Mayo Clinic say that people with health conditions should not wear them because clearly it diminishes your breathing and your health. The same would be true to a lesser degree for anyone else. So the masks are an important part of this as well. And as a person who is at risk, I feel the burden should be on me to protect myself, and that burden isn't complicated. One of the ways I stay active is I like to golf.
Commissioner Barr, I think we need to pull the plug on this.
Spencer, let's wrap it up.
Again, I'm speaking on behalf of a variety of people and concerning a serious issue.
So wrap it up.
I may be new to Atchison. We moved here a year ago, but I'm accustomed to public hearings. I appreciate your indulgence.
We want to let someone else speak. So the individual in the clerk's office, you want to speak?
Yes, Jack. This is John Rasmussen. I have two questions. One concerns what happened last week when one of the largest employers in Atchison was specifically targeted for minuscule numbers by two unelected officials. Not only that was bad enough the way it was, but American citizens' constitutional rights were tried to be stripped away again by two unelected officials. And I'd like to know if the county is going to do everything they can to ensure that that does not happen again.
Okay, anything else?
Is the county going to do anything to ensure that, or?
We're going to engage a public comment. Just listen.
Okay. My next question. And March 19, nuisance ordinance was filed with KDAG. There has been absolutely no action on the county's part on this issue.
I'm not familiar with that ordinance or the report. Was there an address associated with that?
It was 6950 Ottawa Road.
Okay, I believe nuisance ordinances are taken care of by our involvement with NEKES, Northeast Kansas Environmental Services. Pat, have you heard anything back on that report?
Well, I did talk with Mr. Rasmussen back then and have a few times over the years. And there is property there that does appear at times to not be in compliance. I haven't been out there lately, but the last time I was there, it was not in compliance. I did request that NEKES do a written report so that we could file, and that's been the end of it. So I've sent them a renewed request. Oh, gosh, maybe it was two weeks ago, just in general. Which point of view is on the NEKES board?
I am.
I might ask that you make the same inquiry, but I'll send another email to ask.
Pat, that's inaccurate. They did find him in violation, and on August 23rd of last year, Martha turned that paperwork over to you. So that's why I'm here asking why there's no action.
You're saying on what date?
August 23rd of 2019, Martha from Northeast Kansas Environmental turned this paperwork over to you. He was found to be in violation.
Yeah, what I have from that date is it varies. It's August 23rd, right? Yeah, I have some photographs. I don't have any report. And I do have a request to them for a written report because that certainly takes more than just some photographs. But we did discuss it, and we've had discussions ongoing certainly this year as well. So.
We'll look into that.
Thank you.
I would ask the people that want to speak. Comment on the chat bar or something, know that you're ready to speak. Sarah, you've been on for a while. I'll let you speak.
Yes, can you see me, hear me?
I can see half of you, just from the nose up.
You can see from the nose up? Oh, my. Is that better? Can you see all of me now, my face?
It has your name.
It has my name. Okay, I am sorry. I am working from the car. And so how about, I wish you could see all of me, but I don't know how to make that happen. So I will go ahead and just start speaking and forgive my video malfunction here. But my name is Sarah Klingly, and my husband and I have been living here in Atchison for about seven years. We now have five children, and we actually chose to come to Atchison, even though my husband has to commute, because we wanted to be a part of the Benedictine community. And so today, I'm just speaking on behalf in relation to the orders and regulations that have been applied on us since COVID. And we have had such great experiences here in Atchison, but have just felt a real cloud come over the community since the masking orders and the separation orders have gone into play. And we've unfortunately had friends that have had to move due to the risk of losing their jobs at Benedictine College. We've had other friends that have actually lost their jobs at Benedictine because of the lockdowns from last spring. And so I'd just like to take just a couple of moments to to just appreciate the pause, as Spencer was saying, that we do have right now. Just to appreciate that and to look at what is going on in relation to our children with all these regulations. And so I'm speaking as a mother. And so I'd like to say, you know, what I'm seeing is that we're teaching our children through all these rules and regulations that it's risky to get close to your neighbors, that they might infect you. And if one comes into your space, like at school, they're told to avoid those children. We're teaching our children that good health can be achieved best through isolation and avoiding of other human beings. We're teaching our children that concealing their face, their very humanness is the surest course for safety. And I've read that children have a 1 in 2.5 million chance of dying of COVID-19. But I'd like to ask you, how many of our precious children are being devastated emotionally by these rules and restrictions and teachings that are in place right now? And what will be the fruit of this education on our children 10, 20 years from now? And the psychological damage on these children, for some, will last a lifetime. And so I'd like for you just to keep that in mind as you make your restrictions and your rules and you're considering what to put in place. And I'd also like, I had heard that Commissioner Knoll in July had made a motion not to have the masks. And I'd just like to ask him to make that again and for us to reconsider that motion. Thank you.
General. Is it FET, Jordan?
Yes, it's FET.
Okay.
I'm Jordan FET. This is Abby Garretson. We are sophomores at Benedictine College, so we are students of the college. And we just wanted to come speak to you guys to kind of represent the interests of people who this is really affecting and kind of show you guys how these rules are affecting people our age at the college directly. This might be a perspective that you guys haven't had a chance to hear yet. So I think the biggest effect and the biggest thing that we want to share with y'all is how seriously we are taking this at the college. We just want to let you all know that we understand all the concerns and everywhere that you are coming from. But this isn't a joke to us either, and we are very grateful to call Atchison home, and we want to protect all of its residents here at the college and in the city itself. I just wanted to share kind of our own experience with quarantine and with COVID-19. So in our suite, we've got eight girls, and one of our suite mates actually tested positive. And so this is just our direct experience with regulations and how everything played out. So as soon as she started exhibiting symptoms, we all quarantined, self-isolated in our rooms. We kept apart from one another, as well as the rest of members of campus and of the county. Three days later, she was tested and she received a positive test result. So after that had happened, we continued to quarantine ourselves for two weeks. We were contacted by the school, and our school told us to quarantine as well. But we were never contacted by the county. All taken on by ourselves. We held ourselves accountable. And we, as well as the school, holding us accountable to keep everyone safe. And so I just wanted to kind of speak to that and how effective that is. Everybody else in our suite remained COVID-free. None of us showed any symptoms, and we just got out of our two-week quarantine today. And so I just kind of wanted to use that as a testament to how effective we are at policing ourselves and upholding the rules. We all want to stay here. We are all.
Yeah, we chose to be here.
We all want to be here, and we're all doing everything in our power to keep all of us here, to keep all of us safe, to keep all of us healthy in our B.C. community, as well as the Atchison community. And I just want to let you know that all regulations are being followed, and not only are they being followed, but we're policing ourselves. Students are holding each other accountable. Professors are holding others accountable, as well as the administration of Benedictine itself. And we just kind of wanted to make it known how serious we were about this and that we are not taking any of this lightly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you girls hear KES and KES states COVID thing last night on the news? It practically mirrors what we put into place.
We're moving on. I don't have anybody that says they want to speak. I asked through the chat bar. So we're going to move on to the we're moving on to the
I believe Eric Klingly would like to speak. He's having technical issues.
Well, he's, we're going to have to move on, so. His technical issues are. His wife just
Eric Klingly is trying to unmute himself.
Oh, he's on. There he is. So has anybody, everybody had a chance to read the minutes?
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute.
Eric, I have a call on you, so.
Excuse me?
Add something to the conversation that hasn't been already added. Your wife just spoke. Is there something else you'd like to speak about?
Jack, I'm a separate person from my wife, so I do have a statement to make. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. My name is Eric Klingly. As you probably already know, my wife and I and our five children live in Brookdale and Atchison. Today, I address you concerning the Atchison County COVID response, and in particular, the recent issue involving the full campus quarantine order of Benedictine College. I'm a 1991 graduate of Benedictine. My family and I moved here about seven years ago. Quite frankly, we moved to Atchison because of the superior culture, Catholic culture that's here, and the growing economy in Atchison. I work for a vaccine company in Lenexa as head of regulatory quality assurance and quality control. I'm a virologist and have worked with viruses for over 20 years. My current company is partnering with a global company on a COVID project. I can't say more about the project. But part of my job is to really delve into what's going on in COVID vaccine development and understand the end user. My purpose today is to summarize just a few of the things that I have uncovered during my last six months of research. Last week, the CDC issued a statement that only 6% of deaths currently linked to COVID were caused by COVID. As of last week, that equated to about 9,000 deaths for the entire United States. We typically see more flu deaths in a year, even with the 9,000 COVID deaths extrapolated out for an entire year. Quite frankly, I'm surprised by the medical and bureaucratic response to COVID, given the following examples and statistics. People will die and probably have died because of our current Atchison County COVID response. Chemotherapy for cancer patients is down roughly 50% for the U.S. since COVID. People will die because of the COVID response. People in Atchison will die. A study in July of 54,000 randomly selected citizens showed an increase in serious suicide consideration from less than 1% to almost 10%. Even if this number was 5%, the end result is deeply disturbing with tragic short-term and long-term consequences. Last week, at the emergency commissioners' meeting, President Menace said that the mental health staff on campus were overwhelmed. Increase in suicide and mental health issues is impacting Atchison County. People in Atchison will likely die from increased suicides. Alcohol consumption is up 250%. I don't even need to speak about what that's going to lead to. Smoking has increased significantly. In a UC San Francisco publication of meta-analysis of smoking, which included 11,590 COVID patients, researchers found that among people with the virus, the risk doubled in the progression towards serious impacts from COVID. Illegal drug use is up. Doctors are seeing an increase in infections from bacterial, viral, and fungal throat-mouth-dental infections since mask mandates were put in place.
Eric, are you going to wind this up a little bit?
Excuse me?
Are you going to wind this discussion up?
Yes, yep. So based on these things, and as a virologist, I understand that people die every year from the effects of flu. It's unfortunate, but a lot of the same people that are dying from flu are also the ones that are likely to die from COVID. In the end, the real tragedy may be the side effects I listed above, not deaths directly attributed to COVID. So what I'm asking is allow the citizens of Atchison County the freedom to make their own decisions about how best to protect themselves and their family. Allow Benedictine College autonomy to manage their own campus. Revoke or amend the order from the Atchison Health Department regarding COVID. Stand with the majority of counties in Kansas that are allowing their citizens' freedom to exercise their God-given rights and not follow the masking recommendation from our governor. And I ditto everything that was said by Spencer and my wife regarding reissuing or the motion that was made in July. So I appreciate your time and thank you for all these considerations.
I want to thank everybody who appeared today. I think we all heard what you had to say. I got to tell you, you just broke a record because it's rare that we have a public comment. Really interested to see people's engagement. So thank you very much. Okay, everybody have a chance to read the minutes? I have.
Yes.
Is that a motion, Eric? I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Commissioner Paul. All in favor, send it to the floor. Okay. Commissioner comments and committee reports.
I feel kind of bound to say something here. First of all, I haven't responded to anybody. I had extremely amount of emails on the Benedictine shutdown, and I only answered one or two of them because of just time constraints. It's very hard to answer. I want to thank everybody for their email, and I did read them all. So if you didn't have a chance to speak here, I did hear and read all of your emails. So I wanted to thank everybody for that.
Eric, I did know that. I got about 70 emails, I think. About 60% were from students. 35% were from parents, maybe 1 or 2% from the community. I answered every one of them. It was not easy. Some of the answers were just, "Thanks you for talking," but I think that everybody gets to speak on that. So anyway, I have no comments about committee reports at this time. I don't have anything. No. Okay. New business before the board. Justin Knoll has a business, but he's out sick today. So he'll have to appear next week. West Lantern, Resolution 202014-72. Do you want to cover that for us?
Basically, I emailed the three commissioners just the disaster extension. Disaster since March 17th, and this is just extending it until November 14th. And that still makes it to where I can get FEMA assistance and order supplies and PP for all of our emergency services, Atchison Hospital, and all our nursing homes in the community.
Is that exactly the same as it was before? It's just an extension?
Just an extension to November 14th for another 60 days. Just an extension to November 14th for another 60 days, yeah.
The primary portion, one of the things we want to do is we'll have the FEMA money, that, that's one of the main goals and process. Pat, do you want to comment on the, on the resolution?
Well, it's very similar to the other resolutions. I had. At Wes's suggestion, prepared one that didn't have another ending date on it. I'm not sure which iteration you're looking at, but either of those are, are fine. If we, if you adopt the one that does not have an end date, that is that it goes until you, until you declare it over, we need to keep track to make sure that it gets declared to be over at some point.
The resolution states that it may, it may for any additional 60 days up to November 14th. So it's, it's till November 14th.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, so the chairman entertained a motion to approve resolution number 2020 1472. A resolution extending declaration of local disaster emergency during COVID-19 pandemic.
I'll make the motion.
And second by Commissioner Paul, any further discussion? Hearing, none assuming you're ready to vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes through the zone. All unfinished business, Corey Scott, Emergency Medical Service Director, bid open, bid opening recommendations.
Afternoon, gentlemen. I apologize for having Wesley's name underneath me. I had a technical issue this morning and I'm borrowing a laptop. So I've reviewed both bids that were submitted for the remodel of Station 2 in Effingham. Both bids meet or exceed the specification that I outlined. So in keeping with the bidding process, I would recommend that we go low bid. That would be Carney Construction at $15,145.
So are you gonna produce a purchase order or?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do up a purchase order. I'm not sure how we get it to all three of you in this area. So I will ask another department head that's done that, or if you guys have a suggestion. But I can get the purchase order done up and figure out how to get it to the three of you.
So what's the amount again? What's it?
I'm sorry, you're both breaking up.
What's the amount again?
$15,145 was the low bid from Carney Construction.
Okay, just as a matter of process, generally speaking, I have been signing the documents.
Correct.
Michelle and the other commissioners, when they're in town, stop over and sign the documents. So there's a way to get it done, so. If you send me the purchase order, assuming it's approved, I will sign it and send it on to Michelle and you. And then the other commissioners will sign the name of the opportunity. Nice, so the chairman entertained a motion to award the bid to Carney Construction in the amount of $15,145.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second it for discussion purposes. Any further discussion? He's wanting to, second for discussion purposes, he'll be on discussion. Any further discussion?
Yeah. I kind of, I kind of oppose this. The location where it's at is a poor location. Now, I believe this is the third time we've worked on it since I've been commissioner. I think it would be money well spent if we would start from scratch on a vacant lot in Effingham or right on the outskirts of Effingham. The current building, when climate weather and they pull an ambulance in and they want to pull the bed out, they can't because the, the length is too short and it's in that alleyway. And I think it's not good business sense to put any more money in that building.
Any other comments? I'll call for the vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passes through the zone. Okay. County Councilor up.
Unless you have questions, I don't have anything else to add.
Executive sessions.
Before we get to the executive session, I wanted to address something. A couple people mentioned on the comment section about the mask order and they wanted, would like to see it revoked. But I'm afraid that that would be, maybe we'd have to look at that before I would even consider it. Because part of the out-of-court settlement basically with Benedictine was to enact the things that have been enacted now, which I believe is named, the, the mask order is named that Benedictine should enforce. So if at this time, if it would, if a motion was made and it was revoked, I mean, part of that settlement would be out of there. It might throw things back into flux that the health officer might want to impose the order. So I just wanted to address those people that wanted that motion made. I'd have to look into that to see what kind of ramifications that would have down the line.
And I want to get, Eric, Eric, I think that's probably something to take out in a longer conversation. I do want to say that my, I was made to understand that the county commission, since we're not the board, the county board of health, did not have the authority to override the, the health department's orders. That's the information that I received. You know, a lot of people are concerned that I was wrong. I have now found from our county counselor that I, that the county commission can override health department order. So I want to make sure everybody realizes the information that I had was that. So.
Yeah.
Everybody's putting me straight so far.
Yeah, I, I hear you. It's the same statute that I invoked on the mask order, so. And again, and again, the health order would have had to have been, went into effect before we could have acted.
That's true. Okay, executive session.
How long? How long?
Pat? How long for the executive session?
30 minutes perhaps.
Okay, Eric, I'd like to invite Wes Lantern.
Okay. I'll make the, I moved that the Board of County Commissioners recessed into executive session at 1:38 PM for consultation with an attorney for the board, Patrick Henderson, county counselor, which consultation will be deemed privileged in the entire attorney-client relationship and that the executive session is necessary to protect the attorney-client privilege. The executive session will be conducted in a breakout room using the Zoom platform. The board will come out of executive session at 2:08 PM, either in the Zoom platform or in the commission room, first floor courthouse in open session. And those present will be the three commissioners, Pat Henderson, county counselor and Wes Lantern.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved by Eric Hall, seconded by Commissioner Paul, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Passes through the zone. So the administrator, please put us into executive session.
Are, are we back in regular session? Is Michelle?
We are, I was muted, so I wasn't paying much attention to. We're back to a section of public comment. Public can speak, we'd like to leave it three minutes or less. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Thing done, I think we'll move on. I'm going to entertain a motion.
Would you allow me to complete my comments, Mr. Chairman?
I think you've already made your comments, sir. How long you want to speak? How, how long do you want to speak?
You know, I haven't perfectly timed it, I'm just doing my best.
Okay, then I'll give you the full three minutes, Spencer.
Thank you. Well, one of the things that I like to do to stay active is golf. On Sunday, I played in Bellevue's Labor Day Golf Tournament and I was pleased to see Commissioner Bauer participating in the tournament. About 40 people were there. Of those, about two to four were, wore masks inside or out. People were smiling, fist bumping, even shaking hands. Over time, I noticed Commissioner Bauer, who arrived with his mask, would slip off his mask for periods of time, and I have no problem with him doing that. He was using his judgment that he was safely distanced and outside and that it was safe to do. I just want to see all the citizens of Atchison County free to use their judgment too. People need the liberty to live. And the liberty to live is the liberty to solve our own problems using our own judgment in goodwill, just as I did, just as Benedict College is doing and just as Commissioner Bauer did. Today, you can drive across the bridge to St. Joseph and eat at restaurants without masks. Two days ago, our family did so and it was wonderful. Since St. Joseph is not in crisis despite its much greater population and it has no comparable restrictions, and this is good news. There are many states across the country, many counties across Kansas, many countries who trust their people to be careful. And I want to see that same thing happening in Atchison. And I want to remind us that today, that in terms of primary income that comes into Atchison, it really comes from three sources. It comes from farming, vodka and Benedictine. And what I'm concerned about is that these ongoing pressures and orders put these, particularly Benedictine, under, under threat. But these other primary industries create the income that makes it so people can go buy groceries out at, eat out at restaurants, purchase insurance, stocks, deposit money at local banks, buy alms, join the country club, join the Y. A whole host of businesses survive because of this. And people must have the liberty to live even with the coronavirus. This disease like the flu may come back year after year, or it may die out as we gain herd immunity, or it may be cured. But in the meantime, let's learn from what's happened and from the new information about the high number of false positives in the PCR test. We've experienced a spike most recently because of the increased testing and false positive test results. The truth is that the curve peaked and flattened many months ago in March and April. Now, many months later, let's not flatten the vitality of our great county. One wonderful person died recently in Atchison because of COVID-19, and that's a great loss. But it also underscores how well Atchison County citizens have responded. They've responded the Kansas way. So in conclusion, I would urge you to do the following. Restore to every citizen in Atchison County their freedom and responsibility. We need information and we need freedom, we need to be free to solve problems on our own. And number two, Commissioner Knoll, please do propose a new year motion to revoke the government's mask order within Atchison County. And in doing so, you could accommodate Benedictine College as well and trust them that they will act in good faith, as they already have. And number three, Commissioners Bauer and Paul, in view of the new information, please join Commissioner Knoll and revoke the governor's mask order within Atchison County. Thank you again for your considerable assertiveness to our county during this very difficult time, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share my thoughts and concerns.
Spencer, my comment that you left out Walmart is an economic driver.
Were you asking me a question, I'm sorry?
No, I'm, I'm just saying that you left Walmart out as the key industries that are.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn at 12:15 PM.
Also move.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.